Administrator update and action items on abatement request for Mickey Baca at 425 Main Street. Possible action to raise the septic rate from nine cents to 11 cents effective April 1st, 2024. Consideration and possible action on PFAS testing requirements for sewer treatment plant permit. Consideration and possible action on the Water Management Act 20-year permit renewal. Consideration and possible action on the transient vendor license for DB and BC Production LLC. Consideration and possible action on the employment of John Durkey to design and review. Consideration and possible action to sign the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission's seasonal renewal certification. Consideration and possible action authorize the chair to sign the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council SEMLAC revised mutual aid agreement. Consideration and possible action on the transient vendor application for Northeast Cublery Collectors Association. Old business, new business correspondence, and then approval of minutes. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and I would just like to take a moment of silence for the conflict abroad, specifically that going on in the Middle East. Thank you. All right, public service announcements. Mary Lou.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have nothing, thank you.
Miss Mary Dowling.
Nope.
Mary Blanter.
Just a reminder to vote tomorrow with the host, 7 to 8.
Great, and I have nothing. All right, department head report. Mary, come on in.
Terry's on.
Good evening.
A number of things to run through. First is you have the article on Sturbridge and Business West, which was in your package. We've gotten an agreement from them to report on Sturbridge and cover Sturbridge for the first time, and that is going to be their annual spotlight article, and they'll come back again next October to do another one in between any other stories that they or that we can convince them to report on. So I think that was very positive. You have color copies of what is emerging as the new tourism map. We've created the first ever tourism map of Sturbridge to list all the businesses that are in the town for a reader, and this will go into the back of another project we're working on, which is a new tourism guidebook to update the one that we've been using every year. Also, the map is reverse indexed by category so a reader can go to decide whether they want to shop, or eat, or play golf, or check out wellness, healthcare, spas, yoga, fitness stores, shops. And then we put the map into zones to make it easier for readers to identify where the businesses are located. We also, if there are any questions, let me know. Robin, it was great to work with Representative Smola on our member item, and part of the member item grant we received was to create a video to promote Sturbridge, and we've completed the video, and we can play it for you.
Welcome to Sturbridge, Massachusetts, a destination that offers a rich tapestry of attractions and experiences for visitors of all kinds. Sturbridge has 15 restaurants, nine hotels, two RV parks, 15 specialty shops, antiques, and 35 miles of outdoor trails. Step back in time at Old Sturbridge Village, a living history museum that attracts over 200,000 visitors per year. This enchanting campus offers a wide range of programming, from seasonal events to holiday celebrations, providing an immersive experience of early 19th century New England life. For those seeking outdoor adventures, Sturbridge boasts two RV parks with nearly 500 RV pads with the capacity to accommodate approximately 90,000 people. These parks provide a comfortable and convenient base for visitors to explore the area's natural beauty and attractions. The renowned Public House, a historic hotel and event venue, is a cherished name in the region and beyond. Offering 138 hotel rooms, spacious meeting rooms, a delightful bake shop, rejuvenating spa services, and two delectable restaurants, it provides an exceptional experience for guests. With an estimated annual hotel room attendance of 40,000, it's the perfect place to stay and indulge in Sturbridge's charm. Public House also holds a special place as a popular wedding venue. With many weddings taking place on most weekends, it adds to the vibrancy of Sturbridge. This celebration of love brings guests from near and far, resulting in hotel stays not only at Public House but also at the surrounding hotels, creating a bustling wedding tourism scene. The Host Hotel Conference Center is a gem within Sturbridge, offering 250 well-appointed hotel rooms and an impressive 38,000 square feet of exhibit space. With its unique facilities, it serves as a major conference hub in the region, attracting events of various sizes. Its versatility makes it an ideal choice for hosting conferences, exhibitions, and other business gatherings. The picturesque Town Common is not just a charming centerpiece of Sturbridge but also a vibrant platform for community events. From popular concerts on the Common during the spring and summer to the lively farmer's market on Sundays from June to October, it draws crowds and fosters a sense of togetherness, attracting thousands of visitors throughout the year. Sturbridge is a haven for people who love to shop, with nearly 20 specialty shops offering a wide range of treasures, from clothing and jewelry to unique decorative items. Discover hidden gems that will forever remind you of your Sturbridge experience. Food enthusiasts will delight in Sturbridge's diverse culinary scene. With nearly 20 restaurants and eateries, the town offers an impressive array of flavors, generating a staggering $65 million annually in food sales. Indulge in delightful dining experiences and savor the delicious offerings that make Sturbridge a true foodie destination. Craft beer and wine enthusiasts will find their haven in Sturbridge's popular brew pubs and wineries. These establishments not only offer a wide selection of locally crafted beers but also provide a vibrant ambiance with regular live music, creating an unforgettable experience. Sturbridge, Massachusetts, a captivating destination that combines history, attractions, and culinary delights. Plan your visit and immerse yourself in the charm of our town today.
I didn't move here, I'd go there.
If you see Steve Halterman at the end of the video. We are working with OSV to round out the video by having him do like a 60-second welcome to the video, because my feeling is the video just sort of comes at you. And we ran into him when we were filming on the campus, and he was such a wonderful speaker that I thought occurred to me, he could be a great person to say, "I represent Old Sturbridge Village, I'm a resident of Sturbridge, it's really a great place."
I never noticed Steve to be chatty at all.
There you go.
Are you still adding to this, or is it in its final form?
That's the final form minus some of the comments from the videographer, but the final piece is to get Steve to do the introduction.
And then we still those areas where there are a few pictures missing and whatnot, that just needs to be edited.
It's lovely. It's really nice. Yeah, no, it's good. I was just wondering, because we left out a couple, I didn't, if it's done, it's great. I like it. We didn't mention Altruis, and I know we mentioned Brimfield Winery, but I was just curious how we chose the, you know, I mean, it's great, but when I looked at the breweries, I thought, you know, we saw Rapschallion, but right across the street is Altruis, but we didn't mention that one, and I didn't.
That, we discuss that as one of the challenges of when you show us, when you show some of anything. How do you sort of?
I know, that's why. But when I saw Brimfield, I thought, you know.
We can put.
Still adding a few pictures in, so.
Maybe just that was, would be my one.
No, I thought of that too with the wedding venues, the barn.
Right, yeah. We talked about that, I think, where it says it needs more pictures of weddings.
And that's, I agree with Mary, that's a beautiful complex. It's probably one of the prettiest ones on Route 20, really.
They're more than the Host, as far as.
I think the Host, though, is in there more because we really need to market and get that back into heavier use. So as much as it's not.
The owners do.
As much as it's not as pretty as a Public House or a barn, we want to emphasize that we have, it is really the only large conference center that we have, and it's one of the few around here. So I think the importance of keeping that in there, to the degree that it is in there, is more from a standpoint of what we really need to market. Yep, as something we have to benefit all those other small businesses.
I get it. If you are, I agree with Mary, though, if you could throw in a few pictures of, because they've got Cedar Grill, Cedar Cafe.
Oh, no.
Avellino, and the dock. Table three is kind of a big part of our wedding venue as well. But beautiful job, nice work.
Good job, Terry. Any other questions, comments about the video?
That was great.
There's talking points just for me to run through, which you have in front of you. Wanted to start off by discussing the one-stop business assistance principle that we've been working on with Robin, and had suggested that we use that concept, and we are in terms of dealing with businesses, to let them know that if they have a question about the town, they can certainly come to me first with the idea that my role is to not just say, "Go there," but to try to figure out that they're going to get their problem solved, their question answered, have an issue handled, and done so, you know, in a way that's to the satisfaction of everybody involved, if that happens. I've also created a one-stop letter so that if a new business comes to the town, like the new Brazilian food market, they were given a letter that would detail that concept and also to let them know other services that are available for them in the town, such as the Chamber, the small business counseling entities that are in the area, as a way of hoping that their business will benefit from the help that's available for them to succeed. And it gives us a chance to make sure that they're engaged in the license renewal process, that they're up to speed on that, and that they have, again, a face-to-face point of contact within the town. So that's been working very well. I also wanted to point out that in redoing the tour guide, the tour guide involved auditing all of the businesses that are related to tourism, and to my surprise, the number is like over 120. So it's elongated the project to get them all in there, but I thought it would be fun to sort of explain, we have four bakery and dessert makers, four coffee and tea operations, 32 restaurants, eateries, and markets, three orchards, three wineries, six brew pubs, three wedding venues, 11 hotels motels, four RV parks, and 31 specialty shops, and 25 health, wellness, spa, and fitness facilities. It's just, and some of that is just outside our border, it's not, you know, some of them, like Brimfield, aren't going to include that, obviously, but I thought it would be fun to sort of go over just the depth of what's here that we really don't. And of the three RV parks, you're looking at almost 500 RV pads. So it's like having a 500, or three hotels with 500 hotel rooms on top of the nine or 10 hotels that you have now. So it's a significant, significant number there. Meal spending for 2017 to 2023, the table is there, and then I have some talking points. For the calendar year 2023, meal spending rose to 77.6 million, which is a historic high, and is 26% above 2017, which is very impressive. In 2022, sales were 74 million, which also was, at that point, a record high, and it is 67% above the figure for 2020, which was the COVID year, which meal sales had fallen to 46 million. And as we know, during COVID, meal sales did not fall as precipitously as hotel. Hotel basically went almost to the floor in many places, whereas the meal operations and the restaurants were able to continue to draw commerce through takeout, delivery, and outdoor dining. And so I think that those measures helped them tread water through the COVID crisis. Meal sales have averaged $62 million for 2017. And also interesting to point out that the seasonal shift in meal sales from winter, spring, to summer and fall is basically only 20 to 30%. We'll see a larger shift in hotels. So it sort of shows that the restaurants sort of can stay on some kind of a footing through the whole calendar year, where the hotels, when we get to that on the next page, there's a greater shift to talk about. Hotel occupancy has also been very robust. Hotel revenues have risen to 21.4 million in 2023 from the 8 million in 2020, which was the COVID year. So this was an increase of 143%, to show you how much they've come back, and it's 24% above hotel occupancy for 2017 and 2018. Hotel visitorship is seasonal, with a shift of almost 100% from winter to summer and fall. So spring, summer, and fall are really peak, and then winter really falls even further. So that's an interesting statistic to know. We are continuing the Business of the Year Awards program. We had stopped that during COVID. We resumed it in 2022, and we did it again last year, and we'll be doing it again next month in April. The winners in 2022 were Whoop-de-doo Cupcakes, Bird Store &amp; More, Public House, and Old Sturbridge Village. And the winners in 2023 were Teddy G's, Tooty Quanti, the Sturbridge RV Park, and Old Sturbridge Village. And I think the awards have been very successful. We had 300 people vote in 2023, and then, excuse me, 2022, and then we had 700 people vote last year. So it's gained more attraction to a lot of, you know, a lot of residents and visitors. In terms of emerging projects, I put in a plug here for the 501 Main Street project, which to me is a little arithmetic of one parking lot plus one bridge plus one trail equals lots of consumer spending. 501 Main Street, as we know, is a vacant lot on Route 20 that the town purchased in 2021, and is currently grading and paving to create a 24-piece space parking lot. The goal is for the parking lot to connect to a planned footbridge over the Quabog River and link to the Riverlands Trail and nearby Old Sturbridge Village. Sturbridge Trails attract over 60,000 visitors annually, and I think that number is a very good number, and this will certainly help that number a lot. It will really connect the trails to your retail corridor, which I think is really great, because you can stop and shop and eat and drink and go for your bike ride or your walk on the trail. So that's a good positive to work toward. Also worth noting that visitorship and attendance estimates are, all the Sturbridge hotels will attract 100,000 people through the course of the year. The RV parks, I estimate at 90,000, and that's at 50% occupancy of all the pads. I think it's probably more than 40, 50%, but that's just to be conservative, but it's a significant number of people. Old Sturbridge Village draws 200 to 220,000 people a year. I audited their annual report for the last five years, and their memberships and their ticket revenue has been pretty stable, has not been on a decline, it's at a stable point, which, you know, is a good, a good sign, because historic tourism is not a growing part of, you know, the, our common culture. Weddings is hard to estimate, so I put 300 to 400 weddings. How many people at a wedding party, I don't know, but it's a significant amount of activity, and it includes then, a sub-economy comes of that in terms of flowers, rentals, makeup. There's a lot of people who benefit from all that food service, eating, drinking, so to have that many weddings is also a nice little economic driver for the town. Another new emerging good thing is the Sturbridge Regional Visitor Center, which is down on One River Road. The Tourism Board invested in that and gave them a grant to help them renovate the tourism-focused parts of the building that support tourism.
How much did they give?
We gave them $9,000.
$9,000.
Gave them nine. We didn't go to 10, because it would have been bidding reasons.
Committing reasons.
But we gave them nine, and they've created it so you can walk in, and when the center is closed, there's an outdoor weather-resistant brochure rack for people to come in.
And what we wanted to ensure was that the money that we gave, we were guaranteed space on the tourism racks, and so having the chamber located here is a good thing. So we wanted to help them stay here, but we also had to be sure that whatever money we gave didn't just go into the building, but there was something in return for the town. So we had a long talk with Alex about how to make that work as best as we could.
So that's the economic development portion, and I'll close by, as Mary and I was talking about, the SEC, because the SEC is working toward a new community event on March 30th, which will be the Mix and Mingle, which will be a way for residents and neighbors to come out and say hello, and have a good time, and listen to good music, and that's scheduled for March 30th. And then the SEC has had two Home of the Brave races in the last two years, which has now raised $13,000 for the veterans, the Town Veterans Fund, and then had a road race in July, which benefited the Festival of Trees, Breast Cancer Philanthropic Effort that's coordinated with Harrington Hospital, and one other health, one or two other health institutions. So the SEC had a longtime chair in Lisa Bowden, who stepped down, and we thanked her for her service, and now we've recruited a new member who will be starting, will be appointed, I think, in two weeks. So it's all good news from the SEC end of the table. So that's my little presentation.
Very good, a lot of information.
Oh, can I tell you, I just wanted to know, you may not know off the top of your head, but you know where you said there's 125 businesses either in or around Sturbridge? Do we know how many new businesses for this year alone, the 2023? I was going over it in my head. Contessa's, Pickleball, Jito's, Gold Market.
I do have a specific number. We have what I call 55 store windows, and five are empty, and five are full, so we have a really low vacancy rate, and I have the list of the new ones versus the old ones. Yes, I can get that to you.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't know if you just knew off. Okay, yeah, that would be interesting to know, how many.
I think we're really, I was looking at a 2014 report on the Common and the center of the town, and it identified a vacancy rate of 14.9%. So take that from 2014 and where we are today, where to me, anytime a store opens or goes vacant, it tends to get full, which I think is a very good sign.
Yep. I know, I know, I feel badly when, you know, the Chamber has ribbon cuttings. They're often during the day where a lot of us can't attend. I'm hopeful, does somebody from the town go to these ribbon cuttings?
Yes.
Okay.
I've gone to the physical therapy, I went to Paint and Sip. The last one I could not make, because it was like Friday night, but yeah, we definitely get invited and we go.
We should always try to have somebody.
We usually do try to have a representative.
At least one.
Make a point of it, because I went to the pickleball one.
Yep. We usually know, whether it's the board, whether it's the staff, there's usually some representative that we hear of that's going, if not one of us. I also want to credit, Terry brought in the Discover Central Massachusetts group to present to us. So they do all sorts of marketing for Central Mass, and it's something that STA has taken a look at, possibly putting a little bit of money, because ST has, as you know, has its own sort of funding. And they were really impressive with the marketing that they do. It would really broaden our reach into the, like, up toward Albany way. They market out, the demographic shows Philadelphia, I think they said, tends to have a good draw for us, Green Airport in Rhode Island. So marketing posters, and basically taking what we have, and you become a member of it, and there is a rate to become a member, but basically what it does is with that membership becomes marketing, becomes marketing. Looking at how and where they market, it broadens the scope of what we do beyond simply Springfield, Worcester, Boston, maybe Providence sometimes. It broadens us out tremendously to sort of New York, Pennsylvania, all these drivable trips that people with RVs particularly, you know, that type of tourism, it would draw. So driving, driving traffic mostly, but also business traffic. And also strong marketing into like Worcester, partnering with Worcester, because they have a big Worcester presence, and marketing, you know, for people, if you're in Worcester, in the hotels there for work or for whatever, "We're right here, a half hour away, come look at what we have, things to do outside of Worcester." So they're looking into it, they're working with it. They're also hosting a legislative event in a couple of weeks that I'm going to go to, talking about the impact of some of the newer legislation on economic development, some of the, whether we do local taxing authority versus the state, and what's going on with reimbursement, so.
And what is the name of that organization again?
Discover Central Mass.
Oh, Discover Central Mass.
Yeah, and they're really, they're very impressive, and really very knowledgeable, and have, what they showed us was a lot of their, their hits on their website and the type of activity they're getting to sort of justify what we're putting in, and then we also can monitor that after we invest, let's say, in the first year. We can look to see how many hits our sites are getting and things like that, and where they're coming from, which is interesting.
Great. Other questions, comments for Terry from the board?
Great job. You're very good.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, Robin, you are up.
Very briefly, I went to the CMRPC Administrator's Lunch on February 29th. They had a couple guests from the State Economic Development Group, and Ann Goby, who's now Secretary for Rural Affairs, was there, talking a little bit about some one-stop ideas, and just to kind of keep my hands in the pot there and see what's going on. On February 28th, 2024, we had a lovely event. Mary Lou joined us. It was, Worcester County DA Joe Early came and presented citations to several first responders who saved the life of an off-duty Sturbridge police officer. They also honored his wife for her efforts in that to save him. He had sort of what is known as the widow maker, that just, he went into the room to, I think we talked about it at one of the meetings, he went into the other room and she thought it was funny, he didn't come back. So anyway, they had a lovely ceremony honoring that and honoring our first responders. Amima worked with us, Matt White worked with Chief Dessert to coordinate a tabletop exercise last week. It was great. We had people from the local certs, DPW, Directly Blakely, fire representation, state hazmat people, very successful tabletop, where they set up a hypothetical that was a combination of a hazmat active shooter nightmare, basically, and how we would handle it, how we would respond. And it really plays well into sort of, you know, we're working on formalizing our COOP plans, our cooperation, a continuation of operations plans, and we really need to update those, but these give you a good sense of how that actually falls into place when something happens, who steps into what role, you know, like I just wasn't so much decision-maker, I became public relations and communications. So, you know, where your roles change, I relinquish the decision-making, the final decision-making, let's say, to the EMA director, you know, and so you work through that, you get a, it gives you a natural flow of that when you practice. I've been in situations where it's actually had to go into implementation when you set up an EOC, and having that interaction and with other state agencies is actually extremely helpful. Conservation, we're working along with CMRPC with our current peer reviewers to ensure interim assistance. We just saw Ed go by, Goodwin, Mr. Goodwin, along with Aaron, today, sat with interim, potential interim candidate, who we will bring on. He was recommended to us by CMRPC. We also will keep some of our peer reviewer wetlands people to do some wetlands decisions if we need some wetlands work. Heather, myself, and Jean will be reviewing resumes Wednesday, and we are going to try to set up interviews for the following week, and then we will have conservation review the top one or two people before any hiring, any recommendation of hire to the board. We have, I think, 10 or 11 applications, 11 applications, and we'll see what we have in that, in that group. Reading week, on March 1st, I had the pleasure of reading at Burgess. I ended up reading to first graders.
What did you read?
I read the Dr. Seuss, All the Places, The All the Places You'll Go, which I think you had me read last year, too.
I love that, for any age.
For any age, so I had fun, and I read to first graders, who are a little scary to me, because they're really unpredictable, but they were good, and they were very, very cute. After, they come in with their little sign, and it just puts, it puts, you know, on a Friday morning, it's like the best thing that can happen, so, a little bit of life. So that's my overall report. I want to remind everybody again, as Mary did voting, and it's at the host. We are at the host. So if you come into Town Hall, we're just going to send you to the host.
Yep, there's a nice.
I want to thank Lynn for giving that.
Nice sign on the door.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a very good signage.
And then I have a follow-up memo. So as you know, we have an abatement question, but with that abatement question tonight came a lot of discussion on what is loosely called the leak list. It is public access, it is public information. Just so people are clear of what it represents, because there was discussion on social media, and the board asked about this at the last meeting, I think it came up. So the leak list is done typically once a quarter, and it's when they go around and read. typically once a quarter, and it's when they go around and read the meters. And if a meter on that one day of that quarter happened to have run for 24 hours, that's how it goes on the leak list. So if the meter, if something was leaking for five hours that day, it doesn't show up. It only shows up if it was leaking for 24 hours. If it stopped leaking the next day, or wasn't leaking the next day, or wasn't leaking that day and started leaking the next day, it will not show up. And it does not differentiate between things like an ice machine that might run for 24 hours. So we will put it out publicly. I have released it to the resident who had, who had requested as many as we could give her from the past. We have one that was just never produced for that particular quarter. It turns out we just didn't create one that quarter. But we will put access to that, a link to that, and I will put that explanation for the public as to why, you know, how that happens, and, you know, why it's not fully accurate, but just exactly what it is.
Well, this is probably an halftime to discuss Mary's memo.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if you've had time to.
Yeah, I, I read it. It was helpful. Maybe, Mary, you just want to kind of brief the public.
Well, it came up before, too, that is there some way that we can notify people along the way instead of that one day? And yes, there is a way. Does it cost money? Yes. And there is some, some numbers in here. I had one of my researchers get some notice. My unpaid researcher. But, you know, the software is available. You know, besides the leaks and the people getting these extraordinary bills, we waste a lot of water on leaks, you know? So I don't know, last time Shane and Robin said they are looking into it. And I hope we can get a report on it, cost and everything. Shane, offhand, how many services do we have?
Around 1,800.
1,800. Okay.
It's just. So 90 cents per month per meter for 89, but.
Yeah. And then, yeah, it's a couple hundred dollar cost for the meter head. It's not the swapping of the whole meter, which is.
Yeah, but I mean, we went through that when we swapped out the meters we had.
So if I may, I saw your memo, and I, and I saw what town it came from, and I understand what they have. We don't have those type of meters. So the meter heads we have are radio reads, and we drive by and we can read them. The meters that you are talking about are cellular. So, and they are available, and they do come with ion water. You had, Sluckman Downey had asked years ago for me to look into that technology, which I did. I actually put one in at one of our pump stations to see how it worked. And then I gave that information to the town. And on May 5th, 2021, I gave all the information, the pricing, how it works, what it would take, and I submitted that to the town administrator back then. Where it went from there, I don't know.
Neither do I.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I wasn't.
Was I on?
I remember asking, did we?
You asked, and I felt, and I, and I followed up on it.
Did we get all that? There's a step in between, but I don't remember getting any.
So I bought, so I did buy, I bought one, and I put it in one of the pump stations where we use city water, whether it's on all the time or not. And I set it up on my own personal account. And yes, it works. Yes, it's available. But you, so what you're seeing is just the cost if you already have the head. We would have to physically buy the head, and then you would have to come up with some kind of program, right? You can't just start popping these in everywhere. So I think, and I have the pricing, and just so happens, I updated the pricing on February of 2024, and it's going to range anywhere from a couple hundred dollars to 300 and something dollars, plus the cellular fee of like 84, I mean, 84 cents a month, I believe.
So the other, the other option.
Was that an interim that we had when that, when you gave it?
No.
Do you remember? It wasn't an interim TA?
So let's slow down with those numbers. So you just said that the, we have 1,800 heads, right?
Roughly.
Yeah, top mark. And, and the, you would need to replace each of those or update them at the cost of what?
So at the time I sent this memo, I did an estimate on the cost just for the residential alone, and it was $442,000.
Or, or $2,000.
I also contacted the people that are a much bigger town than we have, that has probably five time of services. They have the same program. They have 20 people that have actually taken advantage of it. So, and there's other technology out there, too, that a person can go to Home Depot and buy a simple flow switch from anywhere from 150 to 400 dollars installed. Will do the same thing. So there are options. If the town decides they want to move ahead with these meters, then between Heather, I, Barbara Barry, and the TA would have to come up with some kind of program and put it in front of you for your vote.
Well, I don't think we have enough information on whether we want to move ahead or not. And that's what I would like, a lot of information, a written report on the whole shebang.
Yeah, I have all the information.
Because, I mean, you know, Viola, Viola works for the town, and I think we owe it to the townspeople to do what we can, to help them out where we can.
Agreed.
And as I said, the other option is if you didn't want to have it as a town program, as Shane mentioned, for like 150 to 400, depending on the quality of what you would buy, you could actually, if you had concerns, or rental property is in the case of like the discussion we were talking about here, and you're out there to watch it every day, for 150 up to 400 dollars as an individual, you can actually buy the same technology, have it an app on your, your phone. If the town wanted to do something, the discussion would be, you know, how you would bill the ratepayer who wanted that on. And as Shane said, about 20 people in a larger town took advantage of the option. So.
Yeah, but, you know, but I would like all that. Did we maybe discuss that, 442,000, half a million?
So.
I think we discussed it now. I'm having this.
It was, I, if you did, I, if you did, I wasn't, I wasn't in on that. I know I provided the reports. I went back and dug up the email, because I figured this was going to get brought up tonight.
Well, let's step back from it. So the larger, there's, there's a lot of levels to this, right? The first level is there's just a safety component. If you have running water in a house near electrical, that can be a problem. Yeah. So, and then there's never mind building. So those are, those type of issues are larger. Then there's the economic issue, especially for people on a contained income, where they all of a sudden get nailed on their water bill, and then, so there's that. So I think what we need, I think to Mary's point, we need information on all the approaches and how to, even if it's a blended approach going forward. And, and I appreciate Shane that you provided it before. I don't know where that went, but it doesn't matter. We're here now. So if we can kind of build this out, and if you can work with Robin to do that, so we can just kind of get a practical approach, just to, you know, and even maybe, maybe people have to sign up for those services. It's mandatory. I don't know if that's permissible, but, you know, there's, there's ways around this. You can make people do things.
Yeah, I think, like you said, we need to come up with a formal program, present to you, for you to vote on, and then that's how I think we should proceed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, with all the information.
Yeah, this is information, yeah.
To proceed.
Because sitting here a number of years, Mary and I, it is very disheartening when we can't do anything, and they come forward and they have like thousands of dollars of a water bill. And I know we tell people, you go to Florida, turn off your water, or you go on an extended vacation, but.
Yeah.
Sometimes they just don't do it, and.
And we do, and we do help people.
To human condition.
It's always after the fact, right? It's once they've already got the bill, why do I get the bill? We'll go out and try and find a leak for them, and 90% of the time it's leaking toilet. Same case you got here tonight. And, you know, she's not the only person. I probably helped four or five other.
So Viola does offer, even though it's not part of the agreement, instead of saying, sorry, you have a leak, go get a plumber, they do go in and try to help find it.
We appreciate that.
And, and so I think that's important. But, you know, again, it, it's hard. I mean, it adds up very quickly as we, as we saw, as we see.
Yeah. But it's a problem that should be eliminated over time.
Right.
Or at least there's really no.
Well, you know, eventually, you know, we, we are on the sort of older style meter, and when you upgrade to the, to the Wi-Fi meters, it becomes a whole different situation. The challenge with that, and I actually had a situation in a town where the town was trying to borrow money, you know, on a borrowing to replace all the town's meters.
Yeah.
Town meeting reps wouldn't vote it, because typically those meters will read higher, because your meters tend to start slowing as they age. So the town, the residents actually didn't want the new meters, because generally their water bills were going to go up. And so that became the question, like, is it worth switching out? Is it what people want? Or do we simply just do this, do a head on whoever wants a meter head?
I'm not too worried about that.
And we protect it.
I suspect town meeting is not going to say the best approach is to just stick our head in the ground.
Right.
That's not typically how it goes. We never know. But that's, that's not our problem. Our problem is to make sure we put the best thing forward to them on these type of programs. So with that, I think it probably makes sense to move into the action items, unless you have anything else on it, Shane.
I know.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shane. And offhand, do you know how much is in the fund balance in both?
You ask them the hard questions, huh?
No.
Okay, I'll get, I can get it from Bob.
Recently, it's not, it's not.
Not like it used to be.
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
All right. So we're moving on to action items, and it's consideration and possible action on an abatement request for Mickey Backa at 425 Main Street in Sturbridge. Come on. And please just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Sue Baccar. I'm not Mickey in this.
Hi.
And we're the Mickey Toilet Girls.
Yeah. So nice to see you in person. Like, it's like the mystery email lady and phone lady.
So can you just give your address in town?
425 Main.
Great. All right. So.
Okay, I'll do. We've been small business owners in Sturbridge for, oh, for two decades. And in the year 2000, we bought a 240-year-old building at 425 Main Street. We were kind of naive about how much money it would take. So we have rental units. We have an upstairs apartment, two retail spaces, one of which I now occupy since I retired from teaching with a fun gift shop that wasn't on that video, I might add.
Oh, you touched that.
I don't think it looks that, that great yet. So we're pretty, you know, the, the building's been expensive. All the rentals go into improvements and updating. We didn't realize it was going to be so needy, but we did fall in love a bit. We were doing pretty well at managing, planning, planning expenses. You have to do that in business. We think we're pretty responsible business owners, until now. In January, we got a surprisingly astronomical bill from the water department, the water sewage department. It was just under $3,000. Usually our bills are $200 a quarter, about $800 a year. So this is approximately about, I'm not an English major and not a statistics girl, but I think it was about 900% increase.
900% increase in our bill.
Thank you, Mickey. And we were starting, we thought it was a mistake. We were hoping it was a mistake. So we started a long process of calling people, trying to find out to whom we should speak, what was happening, and waiting for a phone customer return. People were helpful. Eventually, we did get people from the water department came out. We went upstairs to the apartment, went in, and they heard a toilet leak. I didn't. My 73-year-old years didn't even pick it up. I was standing right in the room. So we had a water leak. So we immediately scanned to get a plumber. We had, that was on, what, February 8th?
February 8th.
Water helpers came. We had a plumber and had the toilets maintenance done by February 14th. So we acted quickly. But what was even more astounding, astounding to us is that we found out that on October 6th, we were put on a leak list by the water sewage department. We had no idea. No one told us. It would have been so helpful to have that information, anything.
What date was that?
October 6th, we were on a leak list. Now, here we are, all the way to February 14th to fix the leak. Hundreds of gallons of water were wasted, and the expenses just kept on accumulating. So we have now, and, and it's predicted, by the way, that because of that long period of time, our next quarterly bill will be at least as expensive. So we're talking about for us, a seven and a half year equivalent bill that we have to pay in quarters. It's enormous. It's backbreaking. And I have no idea, especially in an age of climate awareness, the need for conservation, I have no idea why some kind of communication could not have happened. We would have been so thankful, anything. A bill went out to us on October 16th.
Right.
We were on the leak list on October 8th. A bill was sent to us on October 16th. If a little note had been put on the bottom, hey, you have problems, we would have acted quickly, anything. I mean, a yellow car taped to our door, a letter sent home, any form of communication would have been helpful.
So on October 6, 2023, the town found out that you were on the leak list.
Yes.
And then you received your bill in February?
No.
Wait, okay. So what was the date again?
We were, the leak was picked up on the October 1st reading. We were put on a leak list. We got a bill for that on October 16th. However, it was because the leak began in late September. It wasn't a bill that stood out at all. It hadn't gone out.
Understood. But so.
So then.
Okay. So it's, so you have a September, so the leak apparently began in September?
September. We were on a leak list. We didn't know it.
Okay.
Then the four months ensued. It was October, November, December. It leaked, all of those months. Then we got, the reading was done on January 1st. The bill for that didn't go out until January 31st. We got it in early February. All of a sudden, we had this bill for $2,962 without, and we were on a leak list all of that time. But we had no idea.
How did you, how did you become aware of it after?
We got the bill for $2,692, and I called the town and said, I think this is a typo. I can't believe this. And they said, oh, no, you know. And, and in talking to various people, I found out there was this leak list. However, we generate a list, you generate a list, and you don't tell anyone. And as Shane had said, I'm not required to tell anyone. Why do you create the leak list then? In case someone calls and complains, is why you do it. And I know it happens to many people, because yes, I did talk to people on the, somebody said, hey, why don't you go on the community Facebook, which I wasn't on before. In two hours, five people came forward and said, the same thing happened to me.
How many people are on the leak list?
132 for the one that was just done. The prior one, I don't know. I've been, it took me quite a while to get some of those leak lists. I've kind of gone round and round. But it's supposed to be around that time all the time. Now, I started trying cross-reference, like I said, it took me a while to get some of the information, with something called the commitment book, because I couldn't get the bills. And in a very short time, I found like 12 bills that were extremely elevated, that were on the leak list. And the problem with us is specifically because it started in late September, and then the October reading was taken. And so we didn't pick it up. Our bill was, was up $17. So then it was allowed. It was just, it just ran for three more months with an extensive list, a leak. I had no idea toilets could use so much water. But I would never have, I mean, we would never have let it go. For one thing, I calculated that we wasted something like 177,000 gallons of water. And our second bill is going to be almost $3,000, too. So we're going to have to pay $6,000. We wasted 177,000 gallons of water, and we were on a leak list in October. It could have all been prevented. It was, it's shocking to me that that would be, that would happen. And I, I have a timeline for you, if that will help you on how it went. But shockingly enough, what, what everyone is told when they call and complain is, and I guess this is a running thing, if it goes through the water meter, you have to pay it. That's it. That's, it went through your meter, you have to pay it. I just can't believe the town won't take some steps, and I know now you're talking about it, now you are, to let people know, why generate the leak list if you don't tell people? If we knew, we would have fixed it.
I don't have an answer.
Now we're facing.
Can I interject at some point?
Well, let's, let's, let's start with Mary.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. No, we've been looking at this before. I mean, maybe not as in-depth. I'm not even sure the entire board knew there was a leak list before.
First time I.
And I do have a question about why people aren't notified when they're on the leak list.
Yeah, I have a first serious one.
Maybe Shane could answer that.
Well, let's get to that in due course. Mary?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. I did request, you looked into the technology of alerting. But a very basic thing, and I remember this vividly, is a former board said, how come we can't, in the next meter, because somebody had gone away for the entire, they had gone to Florida for like several months, and more than one bill came out. And we inquired, and I think Mary, I know Mary's on the board with me, how come we can't put something in their bill, barring the technology, which costs a lot of money, just saying, look, your, you read much higher than, than you have in the past.
Had you done that?
So that they're alerted. And that did come up. And I thought we said that we would be. And I thought we said that we would be able to do something as easy as that. I remember asking, because I do remember the technology of being able to, but that's like a half a million dollars. And we said, why couldn't we put something in the bill? And I remember having that discussion, number one. Number two, I actually was not aware there is a leak list. And I'm wondering if that came about as a result of the selectman meeting where we discussed, how come we can't put something in the bill? Because I did not know until I read this memo that we had a leak list. So I'm assuming this is a relatively new, over the last several years, occurrence. Is that true, Shane?
No.
Yeah. Because I don't, I didn't realize there was a leak list either. And if we're going to go through the trouble of having it, we should be alerting the people that they're on.
What we've talked about is posting it so people can.
And I thought we were going to, we had talked about putting something in the bill itself.
We have enough staff to address $180,000 gallon water leak. So moving on to that. So Shane, what's?
There's other things they want to address.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the leak list. Okay. So what the leak list is, is when we drive by the person's house and the radio reads, if the meter has been running for 24 hours, it flags that leak, okay? And we get that list and it's just kept, I keep it. And when people complain about bills, we use as a tool to try and figure out why, you know, their bill's so high. However, if you have a leak in the middle of the quarter, and let's say you have a leaking toilet or the sprinkler system's leaking, whatever it may be, and that gets fixed, then it doesn't show up on the leak list. So one of the reasons it was never released to the public, at least my understanding, is just because you're not on that leak list doesn't mean you didn't have a problem in that reading period.
Yeah, but that logic's flipped, Shane. Like, the notion that you're going to say, it's, you're, you have, it's excluding the problem you.
So, and again, and again, I am your contractor. I follow your policy. And it's never been the town's policy to release that leak list. It's always been.
How long have we had? I didn't even know we had one.
We've had, so honestly, I'd have to go back and look. I just started using it a couple of years ago, but it's been available, because I'm never going to sit here and lie, it's been available since we operated the meters.
Sure. Okay.
But.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So, and I just want to speak to a couple of other things. So we're back to, they stated that, you know, they had no indication that, you know, there was a problem. Today, I went through their account and on July 5th, 2023, when we read the meter, their bill jumped 52%. So they got a bill with a 52% increase back in July. So there should have been some kind of indication that, oh my God, that's a problem. I have it sitting right in front of me. The following quarter, it goes up a little bit more, right? And then the last quarter, it just blows right up, okay? And I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing if they had known, hey, there's a leak, here you go. But the town just didn't have that policy in place.
Don't you remember the discussion where we said, can't we put something in the bill to flag the people? I remember having the conversation, we said it would be pretty easy to do. Maybe we dropped the ball, but I know that that did arrive.
Let's not do this. I don't, I don't need to, I don't, I'm just going to hold up, no, let's just, let's just keep this productive here. Because if otherwise, we're going to, I don't, I don't care what happened before, frankly. It's that the town is on notice in October that there was a larger period of usage. And it's not your fault, Shane, if you're implementing the policy and the policy's not fleshed out, you need to have a SOP on it. I get that. But the town is on notice that there is an extreme increase in usage at our property. There is no reason that we cannot have a follow-up communication if there's 150 people. And as we do that more regularly, hopefully we have fewer leaks. And then, because it's, it is a notice problem. The town knew that there was a leak and through its vendor, and as a consequence, they paid more than they ought to.
So if I may.
I mean, it's not, we don't have to back and forth, Shane. Because it's not an argument.
Whether they pay the bill or not, that's, that's.
But this is a policy conversation and you're not sending policy as the vendor. So I think that's not.
I do want to be clear that the town doesn't know that you have a leak. All the town knows, just to be clear, is that a meter did run 24 hours.
Right. And I understand it's not a company having a list. You're saying, like in a vendagio, just because you're not on the leak list doesn't mean you don't have a leak.
I agree.
But you can preface it, personally, if I was on a leak list, I would want to know.
And I agree with you, but that's a policy the town needs to write. And I think that we're addressing that by, one, we're going to release it. Two, we're going to look into the new meter technology.
Chase.
I just want to ask a couple of questions.
Sure, Chris.
So I can make my decision on the vote. Shane, the leak list, I didn't know it existed, it exists. Do you monitor it? So is it something when that truck drives around, reads those meters?
Just an Excel spreadsheet that sits on my computer until we get a complaint.
Okay.
Because even if you show up on that leak list, there's some tech, there's some people out there that are actually using the water 24/7.
Yeah. So how do I differentiate what's going on? I don't know what goes on in people's homes, so.
Yeah, but Shane, Shane, even in that case, though, if those people are notified, they know they're using the water 24 hours. I see no, I don't ever remember the town's policy as far as notification. I mean, I've been on the board a long time and around the town a long time, and I didn't know much about the.
I've been here 18 years and the policy has basically always been when someone complains.
Yeah, but I don't know who came up. We can change it.
This isn't anything you're doing wrong. This isn't any, this is a policy and procedure point.
Yeah, no, we're just saying, Mary and I have been on the longest and we didn't know there was a leak list. That's not the case.
And honestly, I didn't know about it till a couple of years ago either.
Okay.
But Shane, is there a way?
Of course.
When they go around and radio read the meters, that only shows.
Doesn't show.
No, it shows high usage for just that, okay? So those high-usage people, you put on the leak list, right?
So there's a, so I don't, this, I didn't set this up. So basically, there's a predetermined percentage. Once it goes above that, it gets, it gets flagged for a high-low report. There's different reports. The leak report, the meter has been running for 24 hours continuously. And it doesn't, and the guy driving by, he doesn't know because that thing is reading so many meters within a minute. You know, it'll read 20 meters, like that.
But I mean, at those times, when you get places, I mean, we don't have to wait till the next bill goes out to put something in. I mean, we can use the post office.
Well, yeah.
Or I'd call the people.
I mean, or even email. I mean, there's things that you can do automatically, shots out on, but.
Yeah. So that's my issue is like, if we do notify on the bill, at that point, it's too late.
Yeah.
And we're in this situation all the time. So how often does he read that meter? Is it a monthly or is it quarterly reading?
Quarterly. Quarterly. Every three months.
How long does it take to read the, what's the?
It's like some of them.
About five hours, so I can read the whole town.
So the, okay.
Five.
So, do you want to say something, Mary?
No, I just was clarifying.
Well, you were out of order, but it's fine. The, all right. I have a suggestion. I think we probably can't do this on an ad hoc basis right now. I think we need probably a little bit more information about the leak list and the extent of the problem and the larger cost because we, even though we, obviously, we're sympathetic towards you and my inclination would be grant this abatement. It is, well, I know you might disagree, but I, that is my general point at this. But with that, I need to know what this problem is and I need to know what this leak list, how many people are on it, what it looks like, how much information it is, what are the costs? Because you can't just, we can't just do for you as we wouldn't do for him.
Can I just ask a question? Because this is something new that we didn't have in the emails. So in July, there was an increase in your bill as well?
No. I don't know.
And I'm not trying to, maybe this is for when we gather more information before the next meeting, but I do want to look at that.
I don't know. I have.
Because that was the first I'm hearing.
The most recent bill was 2,962. The one before that was $317. Prior to that, 299. Prior to that, 196.
So on July 5th, the bill goes from 196 to, 19630 to 29947. That's a 52% increase.
So it was going up at that point? It just didn't skyrocket until the.
Yeah, which is, I mean, something of an increase, but we have that tenant. Laundry and, you know, it's like, it wasn't like something that really jumped out at us and that we were ignoring previously. I do have a timeline. Would that help you?
I don't think I'm.
No, I think.
I do also.
We're trying to handle two things here. I think we should just concentrate right now on the request for the abatement. This list and everything else, we can straighten out what should be done with it and everything else. My personal opinion.
Oh, yeah. I would, yes, I agree. I think that we're trying to combine two different things. One is a policymaking henceforth, what we do with our leak list and how we notify people, which doesn't have to do with this particular abatement. But I mean, to give a full abatement means that the town was fully responsible for everything. And, you know, having sat here for a number of years, I mean, I do think that we should have or we could have given notice, but in the end, it wasn't, it was the leak of, you know, the business owner. I mean, it was your leak. To put it, to give 100% abatement says the town was fully at fault. I'm just, I'm just showing you where I'm coming from. I think we could have done more with our list. And I thought we were going to start putting in the bill, at least for the next bill. In this case, it would have helped a little because you've gotten more than one bill now. You're going to have two bills.
We're going to have a second bill.
So I remember sitting here and saying, why can't we put something? I mean, to be honest with you, I would be inclined to split it 50/50, 50% of the town for not following through when you're on a leak list and 50% with the business owner because the leak was theirs. And I wouldn't have a problem abating it halfway. So I'm just telling you, that's, in the past, in the past, the only time we've given a full abatement was when there was absolutely no leak and we couldn't identify any other problem. And we said, must have been our meter because there was no leak. They had, you know, plumbers come in, they checked. In this case, we do know there's a leak. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'm more than happy to look at the rest of the information, but I am inclined to say when we have a leak list, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good if we're not benefiting our residents by it and notifying them, you're on a leak list. And whether or not that would have changed your behavior, I think it probably would have.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. But at the same time, the leak was there, so.
Mary, look.
I have a question for Shane. Shane, so if you read the meter, say, on the first of the month, there's no leak. Three days later, there's a leak. They're not going to know that until the next quarter when they read, correct?
Correct.
So.
Unless, I mean, we can't, we can't make it 100% on us that we're.
Unless we move on with different meters.
Yeah. So I think it's, I think that, I understand where both Marys are coming from. I think I still would prefer to know the extent of the problem before I make a decision. Because if it's just, they're the only ones in that particular instance on this rat, at least this rat last period.
Well, they, they're the only ones in front of us now. Anybody else, I'm sure, would have missed the time schedule. There is a policy as far as appeal.
Oh, I'm not talking about this. I understand the abatement schedule. That's why, but I'm worried about what's happening right this second.
Yeah.
That's more what I'm talking about.
But I'm not, I'm not in favor of abating. We didn't do it for other people, except in that one instance. We've had people with leaky toilets. We've had people that, a neighbor of mine left the hose out for three weeks.
No, I get that.
We haven't, we haven't abated.
And without the, and I generally, even though it can be a somewhat brutal policy, agree with that policy. But I do think that having notice of the leak list and then not following up is.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't, doesn't help all those other people that could have been on the leak list that we didn't abate either.
That's true, but they're outside this, the period of time.
Yeah, I know, but that's what, that's what I mean.
We didn't know it was a leak list.
No, that's what I mean about we're mixing two things, you know?
I hear you, Mary, but I think it's, I think that's too simple. I think that there's a period of time where the town had notice of a failure and it did not act to mitigate that failure. And then if you hit people or small businesses with $3,000 unexpected bills, it is not fair at some point. Now, I agree with you that there's an account, I understand Mary's point about there being an accountability of the property owner to make sure their property is upkept. And I'm sure you guys are going to have more plumbing inspections going on, going forward. But, so I'm, well, take it to the board. Does it, do I have a motion?
I think we have to abate some personally. I'll wait for more information if you want. I am inclined to abate something because we could have taken action to help you out and we didn't. I didn't even know there was a leak list. So we've made other determinations over the years without knowledge of there even being a leak list. Let's put it that way. And I think it came to light because we were going to look into technology, a way of warning people ahead of time if we could, or stick something in their bill. So we've only since started utilizing a leak list because we've been on the board for many years and we had no knowledge of it, no knowledge. So I am making my judgment tonight with a little bit more information.
So you should be aware too, the bill this quarter is going to be huge. Sorry. I've already given them the numbers, you know, that they, I actually went and read their meter again for them and gave the numbers. And they've since have fixed the leak, but they're going to have another big bill this quarter too.
Even, even from the time, if I could, even from the time, I think, of notice, when you were able to call a plumber and get a plumber in, there was, I think it was 1,800 gallons of water an hour for nine hours a day.
But I mean.
From the time, so again, and I'm not saying the town should or should not abate that, but that was even from the time of being aware of the leak.
Right. So I think, I think I actually agree with our chair. I like to see a timeline of when the leak started, when you became aware of the weak leak, and what was the time period before a plumber was called?
My, my idea.
Right, but there must have, because you're going to get another really hefty bill.
Because, because.
There must have, you must have had knowledge from your last hefty bill. How could you not?
No, we didn't.
May I?
I can put a timeline together.
Okay. May I give it to you?
You do know you can make arrangements with the finance department on payments?
It's, I mean, we, it's still not.
No, but I'm just saying.
The reason that it got to the next bill was because the reading that we finally found out about the bill was done on January 1st. We didn't get the bill until early February. So that whole month transpired as well. Now, as soon as we were able to get a plumber out there, as soon as we found out and they kindly came out and said, yes, it seems to be your toilet, we got someone out. And.
So you got your bill at the beginning of February, and you're saying within a week you had, the problem was fixed by a plumber?
Absolutely. And the water company kind of came out.
Trying to say, we don't know if it's a leak or not.
And I also.
That's all I was trying to talk about.
They, 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 they are not all high-tech. Something prides itself on going to people's doors and putting a yellow post cap to tell them they have a leak.
How did you know that the leak actually began on September 21st?
They, the town, the water company came out, they ran out of equipment to our meter. And when they do that, as I can say now, it does a whole reading of all the, they, they even, and if you look, we, there's a column that tells you on the leak, that you're on the leak list. That started on September 1st.
It was originally?
They read it on the 1st. We put on official requests on October 6th, but it's a bill that was on the 15th of November.
Irrelevant.
So then the water ran through, through November, through December. We got the bill, and it had already run through January and into February.
Well, we appreciate it.
Do you want to?
Yeah, good to.
Do you want to table this?
I think table it was what I inclination, if you.
I have no problem tabling because a few people wanted more information.
Okay. So we're going to table this for now. We appreciate you coming in here and going through this with us. So Ramin will probably be in touch with you about next steps. I'm not sure when, we're probably looking at April for this one because the next meeting is.
And I do, I do, I know that there was a lot of back and forth on trying to get the commitment books and the bills, and I just want to be clear for anybody listening. Sometimes it's not as easy as, we don't have the bills in a file, they're individual, but we also had to find out legally because when we released the commitment bills, the commitment books to her, it identifies people who have delinquent accounts. And I had to check with KP Law, that is public record. So just understand that the delay was because we also have to protect everybody.
Sure.
And so I do want to, I apologize, and we didn't, we started to go through the formal public records format, and then it would have been 10 days back and forth. I did have her fill out an official request, and then we didn't worry about the 10 days or charging the fees or anything because we did want to get the information. I do apologize for the delay, but we really had to be sure we protected other people as well for what information is going out publicly.
If I might speak, may I? The reason I was trying to get some of that information is to actually find out how many people this happened to. And from what I've seen, and I haven't been able to get all the records, and it takes a matter of looking at the leak list and looking at the people and trying to figure out, and it's pretty unscientific, but it looks, it looks indeed like that leak list is a tremendously helpful tool for people because when you look, their bills are elevated from what they were previously. And it would, the waste of water is just staggering to me. I can't even believe it.
And I just certainly think as a policy, we can post, very easily just post it.
Well, yeah, I think we're.
But you're only posting it every one month, right?
That's what we have.
I think we've explored it enough for tonight. We're going to keep processing it.
So I'll make a motion.
You have what the policy is in a few other towns that are nearby?
Yes.
How did you arrive at that information?
I called them up, they were very, very nice.
I'm sorry?
I called them up, they were very, very nice.
I know, did you call the TA, the DPW director?
I called the water company folks.
A water company?
Yeah.
Of the water people?
I did, I called the water people. And I might point out that you have a tremendous concern about trying to maintain a good business climate here, and we're one of your businesses, and we've been here for 20 years. And right now, we're struggling to do things like fix the slate roof on our, on our 200-year-old building, and this would be the budget for that.
No, I understand that and appreciate it. As a small business owner, I get the stress unexpected costs can give, and we will explore this more fully so we can make an informed decision that balances all of our interests. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. And so when you table it, when you take it up again, do we come back, or how does that work?
I was just going to, I'll make a motion that we table the subject until what's good date. We meet on the 18th and then not till April 1st.
So Mays, I don't know, have you paid the bill yet, you know?
We paid one of them.
So, and I don't know how, I'm not the accountant, but penalties and interest will start to accrue after the due date, and I don't know if those, if the interest can be removed once that happens.
DOR doesn't let us remove interest.
So, again, I'm not the accountant, I just know that they're going to start growing, and I'm pretty sure the bills are past.
Even higher?
No, we're, I think they came due.
Well, typically, when we've given an abatement in the past, a lot of times, they come after they've already paid it, and then we abate it.
So that's what I'm saying.
Because right now, you owe it without a rule of.
We have, we have paid this bill.
I think Shane just wanted to make them aware.
I didn't want, I want to make sure that they paid it so that they're not, while this is being going on, they're not getting more penalties.
They will do the Friday.
Friday, the 29th. So you are responsible until we vote on an abatement.
Well, and once again, we are, we are not the type of business people who would just not pay the bill.
Oh, I know, I get it. I didn't know because she tabled it. Sometimes people think that the bill was tabled, I don't have to pay, right?
So I'm sorry, it was tabled to what date? I didn't hear it.
18? Is that what you said, Mary?
I think that's what Mary said, too.
Yeah.
March 18th?
I have to come?
I think so.
Do we have to come back? Do we have to be here?
Yeah, probably makes sense for you to come.
No, no, no.
Thank you so much. Do you live close by to finally?
Thank you so much for your help.
To finally be sure, I know we've been going back and.
I'm sure you'll be glad not to.
It's okay, okay.
All right.
I know we're getting you back.
Yeah, we got to, we got to keep moving with our meeting.
We need a second.
Yeah, we need a second, so.
Thank you very much.
I'm starving.
All those in favor? Great.
Oops.
Thank you. And so I'll be in touch or with whatever information to share, but it will be automatically put on the agenda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so we're moving on to Act. item B, which is consideration and possible action to raise the septage rate from 9 cents to 11 cents a gallon effective April 1st, 2024.
So it's pretty simple. Chemical costs going up, electricity's going up, gas is going up, everything's going up. The other two people that take in a lot of septage are going to 11 cents on April 1st. We need to do the same thing.
Questions from the board?
No questions.
Do we have a motion?
So I make a motion that we approve to raise, raising the septage rate from 9 cents to 11 cents a gallon.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I have it.
Jay, now this next one, we have no information on.
Yeah, I was about to get to it. So the next, Action Item C is consideration and possible action on PFAS testing requirement for sewer treatment plan permit requiring testing for PFAS on certain types of business requesting cost of sampling be charged to the business.
I don't think it was really an action item, I think it was.
It's more of a discussion, I, we don't need a vote.
Okay, so what's going on here?
So one of the, we, we received a new permit last year for the discharge of our wastewater treatment plant. Our permits are annual, it's a standard permit. We have a permit from the EPA for a medium-sized wastewater treatment plant. One of the conditions of that permit is PFAS testing on certain types of businesses, which include landfills, car washes, metal fabrication, I'm going to miss some, canneries, which we don't, if anybody knows.
We used to.
Yeah, we probably have to.
You must have at some point, does that Stormbridge Village, yeah?
Yeah, right in town.
Any, any manufacturing that possibly use PFAS, today, we came up with a list loosely of nine, including the landfill, that we would think that's right. It is, so we have to do this enough. Normally, when we have industrial permits, a few of these businesses do have industrial permits, they're required to test the cost. Or, is kind of specialized that we need to probably do a composite sample, and, which we do have a composite sampler. So what we're looking into is that we think that we need to start notifying the businesses that there is this cost that's coming up, and to facilitate it, we can do the sampling and run the sampling through, so, because we have the composite sample, we'd have to set it up at every different place, which is some setup in time for Shane's people, but it is a requirement that we do it. It's about $1,000 a sample. And the one thing that we don't know is if we do find PFAS, if they're going to make us do another round of sampling, which is what they have done with the water samples. You know, we definitely have been hearing a lot more about it, and part of it is they do want to find out where the PFAS is coming from, probably more of a, let's find out what businesses are, it's actually being discharged in their waste, we have to report it on a yearly basis, and we're going to have to do it every year coming forward. So there will be a cost. We're just trying to get some direction whether we need to put it in the budget for next year or if we're going to pass that cost through to a business.
Questions, comments from the board?
No, I mean, I tried to look it up, but all I could find out was that it was for water, not wastewater.
Yeah, we have wastewater testing PFAS requirements too. We can give you our permit, but it's, how many pages?
I read it. Well, I wrote enough.
If you're, if you can't sleep, that's the one you read.
I sleep well.
He gave me the section, I didn't read the whole permit either.
I have a question, Chair. Is this a new testing requirement?
It's new under our permit, yes.
It's new to our permit, because I was going to say, what have we done in the past with?
It's new to our permit, and it wasn't, so our permit's been in effect for a year, it didn't, it didn't come into effect until subsequent years, like, it's not, we didn't have to do it last year, this is a brand-new thing, and it's, doesn't have to be done has to be.
It has to be done by, you know, September 31st, 2020.
If you know based upon your prior experiences, how many towns pass this on to the business and how many towns?
I don't think we're going to know that because it's brand-new to the permit.
It's brand-new to everybody.
So in general, what I was giving you, the example, when we have our industrial discharge permit, which is part of our bylaw, so any industry that has to, that meets certain criteria, and usually it's done by SIC code, it's there, the sick code, usually it says, if you have this type of business, you consider it an industrial permit, and you have to cover the cost of sampling for that, for your industrial, and you have to treat your waste so that you don't, you don't discharge too hot of waste, you don't discharge too high of low pH waste, you don't discharge too high chemicals. Those costs are passed to that industrial user. And basically, what we're looking at here is a larger group than just what our industrial group users are, but it's the same, have a similar thing. It's a very limited scope, it's not to every user, obviously, it's to users where they suspect, and it's suspect, it's not known that there could be PFAS.
But it's inherent in the nature of their business.
Correct.
It's something that they assume by what they do to make their living.
More likely.
Right, so, okay, I mean.
Absolutely.
And it's a yearly cost until, until the permit changes, which won't happen anytime soon.
Well, on the, on the dump, if the town's got to do it, then we're going to have, landfill's going to.
That's one of the sites.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to put that in the budget.
Yeah, right, of course.
So that, that obviously need to be budgeted. The rest of it, if it's, you're talking about $1,000 annually, for most of the businesses of this scale, it's safe to say that that is not consequential relative to their water bills.
Most of them are, I can, we can look into that to see what it is, and one of the, one of the criteria was how big a flow they had to, like, so, yes, like OFS, obviously, they have a very large bill, right?
I don't think they care about that at all, if I were them, that's like, whatever.
I'll just give my two cents. I don't see why the town would pay for something like this. This seems to me something that the business, when they're in that line of business, they know that's one of their costs, and it's probably even tax deductible, right, as an, as an expense? I don't know if it is, I don't have a financial background, but I don't know, I don't know why we would pay and have other users pay for a business expense that's that specialized.
No, I agree.
I don't, I don't know why we.
We want to bring this, because they're going to come too, because it's a financial, you know, they had no idea, right? PFAS isn't really all that new, so when they're going, but it's, it's not our requirement, it's not the town, it's the DEP and the EPA.
Correct.
So, and to be honest with you, I agree with you, but we just want some direction on, do we put money in the budget?
We just wanted to put it out there so that you knew that it was something that, you know, we're getting a lot of flags about all these additional costs for wastewater, but it's not something that we, I agree with you, I don't think that the other users, you know, the other thousands, thousand users, 2,000 users we have for wastewater should have to pay for the testing for 10 users, right?
I think that's correct, yes.
So we'll, we'll try to get a very distinct list and provide them with some information and provide them with a program, but the idea is, we also don't want to make it overly burdensome on them when, you know, to have to have the specialized equipment to come and take the sample. So it may be something that is better that we bill them for, we go ahead and we'll set up the sampling schedule so that we know that it's doing done right, because it is kind of a, it's because the limits for PFAS are so low and the testing requirements are so low, it's very specialized what you have to do and the way that sample has to be collected and handled.
Literally, the gloves on the hand of the sampler can impact.
You literally can't wear gloves on your hands, which is usually just opposite of what you.
The plastic from the gloves will actually trip. I just wonder if they have to pay, and it's their expense, if we don't give them the choice between the town will do it for you.
Yep.
And we will bill you, or if you want to find an independent contract and to do yourself.
That would have to be approved by us, right? Because there's a sampling protocol, and I just, no one would.
Once they're paying, I feel like some of these businesses may very well say, well, you know what, if we have to pay, we'll, we'll find our own.
I think though, that, I think to the point is to make sure that the testing is done appropriately. I think that it makes sense for us to set a pay schedule for what the cost of the testing is, what our cost to do the testing is, pass it along, and the only, I don't think it would change my opinion on it, but the only thing I'd want to be cautious on is if there was some smaller entity that that would put pressure on, but I.
So, and just be aware of this, so any result we send to the DEP, they can send an email saying we want you to retest, that's not $1,000.
Yes.
They're going to have to comply, the business would have to comply with whatever the statement.
I'll just let you know.
We may just need to make sure that we're very clear in our policy saying, we probably should have a written policy.
Yeah.
And have it, you know, as type of a thing so that we can say, this is the policy, you're falling under this criteria for this permit, here's what we need to do, because it is our permit, it's not their permit, remember? It's our monitoring permit that we have to meet.
Building them for the service is probably the best and safest way to ensure that it's done right and our permit doesn't end up in jeopardy.
Because we haven't been mandated, but you've tested, it's, PFAS is showing up at the wastewater plant, which is, and it's not in the drinking water, so that's, makes you wonder where it's coming from, right? And when the DEP gets the results, their comment is, you should probably start looking for your sources, so.
And this is one way that they're forcing us to.
This is one way to start looking to see where it's coming from.
Well, that does make sense, I guess. So I think that, I, my inclination would be, and I don't think you need, and I think this, everybody agrees with this, so correct me if I'm wrong, is that we administer the test, we administer the testing, we charge a fee for that, and we charge a fee for the testing, and so the cost passed through to these high usage things, and also please loop in the Board of Health for landfill.
So we'll tentatively plan on not building that question to our budget, or just the landfill question to our budget, and then we'll bring back what, however the policy's drafted, we'll run it through KP, and then have you all take a look at it before we send it out.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right. On to consideration and possible action on the Waste Management Act, WMA, 20-year permit renewal application.
Water, it should be water management.
Did I say waste?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, water management, that's just my tired eyes.
Yeah, I hear you. So I think you did get some information about this. So we have been, we have to relook at a Water Management Act permit. We've been working with our WELL4 and what the, what the Water Management Act impacts for our WELL4. We finally kind of got that settled with DEP, and they kind of came back with a holistic approach of, okay, you gave us this application, you wanted, I'm going to round numbers here, 2 million gallons per day, but you realistically, we don't, we can't support your 2 million gallons per day because your usage is way down here at a half million gallons per day, and we can see very simply, if you want to accept our 791 million, average million gallons per day usage, then you can do a much limited, much more limited thing, or if you want to try to still fight for this much, this higher number, you're going to have to show us where this allocation is actually going. So we stepped back and said, okay, can you give us a little more time, because it had a pretty short timeframe? We spoke with, we had Time Bond who did the original permit for us for Waste, for the Water Management Act, come in and have a conversation. And after speaking with them and speaking directly with DEP, we had a joint meeting with both of the parties, basically, and, and Time Bond saying, well, it does make sense because your sewer permit is much higher, that we ask for that limit. However, we can't really justify in the next 10 years a build-out to 2 million gallons per day usage. And if you look at where our average day usage has actually gone down, because we actually have very good water conservation, and even though I know, like, it looks really bad what just happened with the one client, but, with the one resident, but our water conservation and our usage actually has been declining, not really increasing over the last 10 years. So you're very safe in that 0.79 million gallons per day. When you look at where our growth and what growth possibly could happen, even with the new development going down on 131, which would be using our water, that's only like a 10,000 gallons per day increase. It seems like a big development would use a lot more water than that, but it actually doesn't. So we're not looking, we don't really have any known usage that we're going to have this huge, like, oh, we can't do this and we need to really fight for this water. Any of those things that to fight for would be first, high engineering costs to justify it with the consultants, plus then high implementation costs. It's not that you can't get more water back in 10 years if for some reason we need it, if we have a huge growth and we need it. At that time that you go to them and you say, look, here is where, here's how our growth has gone up, we need to go, we need some warm water because we have these people coming in, we have this additional need. What they're trying to do is just not give everybody a blank slate to use all of the water resources that we have, so, and try to keep us all normal. It really doesn't change much. The Water Management Act, I think you're all familiar, we have to put water bans in place at different times. Those wordings are changing a little bit, but they're changing across the whole state. This isn't something just specific to us, okay? So, yes, changing is getting a little stricter in certain areas, but yes, it looks like you're giving up some of your water rights, but you really didn't have them.
Well, the thing is, I mean, we spent quite a bit of money upgrading, and, you know, with the capacity at 1.12, we were anticipating that growth didn't happen, but, you know, anticipating, and I think we're still anticipating something. They don't take that into consideration. They're basically looking at, hey, you didn't use it, you didn't come close to it.
So 200,000, you know, you're still talking an increase of over 200,000 gallons per day, almost 300 at 7.91. That's considerable growth, even.
Room.
You know, so we have a lot of room to grow still, and it's, it does get reviewed every 10 years, so you would be going back through another cycle. So if you, if we show that growth and we're getting to approach that, that is when you go back to them with the justification of, look, we're already here, we need that next level of security to be able to continue growing.
So we're not cut off forever.
You're not caught up forever.
And efficiencies will continue to improve with the laws older buildings can rehab.
Well, as.
It's true, though. It does, that'll create space as well.
As you, as.
I started here, your usage was about 691,000 gallons a day. That was 18 years ago. It's now down to 500,000.
Even with growth.
It's not, it's not, you're shrinking, you got more efficient toilets, closets.
We mandated to look for leaks every three years, which we don't believe we have a lot of, so.
I show you some of the things I took out of my house.
That were very leaky. Yeah, I mean, it's amazing what water efficiency toilets have. I mean, I've been in the business for over 10 years and worked in water. It, it's, the water usage at certain places, what used to be like the Masseter Pike, which is, you know, Charlton, they used to use almost a million gallons per day at times of water, and their usage is down to like 50,000 gallons per day on their peak highest day. It was such a dramatic change in the usage of water, and it all had to do with water efficient toilets. And that, when, when the rates go up, which, you know, water is, it's getting more and more expensive because electricity and every, all the costs are going up, water goes up, guess what? People become much more aware of what they're using for water, and they become much more aware of, I'm buying that high efficiency washer, I'm buying that, you know, low flow toilet.
Jesus, 45-minute showers are over.
Yeah.
And you know what? I agree with you. I don't, I don't like giving, the fact that we're giving up some of your rights, I don't like it, but to be honest with you, I think you just kind of spend a lot of money on lawyers and you're going to lose.
And engineers, and we're probably still going to lose, because we can't, if we had.
No offense to the lawyers and engineers.
If we, yeah, no offense to any of us, but if we had like so many developments all lined up in the works, then we would be putting them down on paper and saying, we have this water commitment, this water commitment. But when I started to do that, I couldn't get anywhere near.
A town of this much buildup, proportional buildup to what it's likely to build out to, it's a pretty built out town to where it is going to go. We're not going to get tremendously more dense. So it would be unlikely that we'd have some dramatic issue that we're not going to meet those capacities.
And when we had the call, the engineer, because he's the one that built your wastewater plant, brought up, you know, they built, they spent all this money on 1.3, that was based upon how much water they could take out of the ground. The two sides even talking to each other, you know, water side, wastewater side, and I don't think we really got a definitive answer on that.
It was more like, a little bit like, yeah, we know, but, you know, and honestly, they are coming at it from two different directions, you know, they're trying to protect.
Well, I mean, I can see their point. I just, I just know the money we spent and the hassle we went through.
Oh, I did imagine, yep.
You were here for that.
No, I, that's why I'm not, I don't agree with giving up the water rights, but I just don't think you're going to win. I don't want to see you waste your money.
I think we would have, you're much better waiting until further down the road where you can actually spend money on, you know, getting it back.
And I won't have to worry about it 10 years.
I'm actually in the middle of doing the state report. You're missing, right now, I think the number, when I get done looking at this morning, because I look at it more than once, make sure I didn't mess it up, about 5% of your water is unaccounted for.
Which is very low.
You're mandated to be under 10%.
Okay, so you need a motion approving the renewal application?
Yeah, I think you just need to, a motion to support going with option one and taking the recommendations from the mass DEP of the limited.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we support option one, recommendation from the DEP and a DPDW.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Great.
Thanks, guys.
All right, guys.
Now you're done. You're released.
Okay, so consideration, possible action on a transient vendor license for DB and BC Production LLC, David Brockman, for an antique textile vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on May 12th, May 13th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yep, this is something they do yearly.
Yeah.
Doing it again, we've never had any problems or issues that we know of, so.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for DB and BC Production LLC, David Brockman, for an antique textile vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on May 12th, 2024, and May 13th, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on, consideration and possible action on the appointment of John Durkey to design a review committee for a term to expire June 17th, 2024.
This gentleman submitted his interest. He's moved into Sturbridge a few years ago, I think, in his email, and then, oh, yep, he did send this. Jean met with him and spoke with him because it seemed most appropriate that she would have the input on this, and she was very comfortable with him. Born in upstate New York and relocated here in 2020. Wants to take more of an interest in this community and get more involved. Nice to see new faces when I get involved sometimes. So after Jean met him, talked to him about the schedule, he was still interested, and so we are recommending him.
Do we have a second? Have you seen, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the appointment of John Durkey to design, design review committee for a term to expire June 17th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it.
That's only three months.
He's finishing out the term.
Yeah, we have, we're trying to clean those up, if we recall.
I want to know if.
Plus, he references his wife as his beautiful wife in his application, so we figure he's got to be an okay guy.
Yeah.
We're going to close for that.
Yeah, I don't know if that logic's. Consideration and possible action to sign the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission's Seasonal Renewal Certification for 2024.
I'm not sure there's much to say about that.
Oh, Michelle, do we have anybody that?
Just one, Hemlock Rich. Oh, he's the only one, Mike Palmer.
Yeah.
Just, he's the only seasonal, and he renewed.
Okay.
Oh, he renewed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, he renewed. He's the only seasonal, he renewed.
All the golfers.
Do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
That's okay.
The ayes have it. Consideration and possible action, authorize the chair to sign the Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, SEMLAC, revised manual aid agreement.
So this came to my desk and it wanted the chief executive to sign it, and I said, well, that would be Jamie. So I just passed it forward to the board. This is just a, I think, what we already had in place, and, yeah, Melissa, Senator, I think you have it in your packet, but this is something we've been doing, and it's to ensure primarily SWAT, K-9, mutilate stuff instead of everybody having duplicate efforts.
Questions, comments from the board?
I just have a question.
I know we've signed this before. I know this is revised. What in particular was revised about it?
I honestly don't know the, what.
I'm just curious if you could find out from.
I will find out for you, yeah. I don't know what the change was. I, the chief has reviewed it and forwarded it over, so I'm presuming whatever the change was was something he wasn't too concerned about, but I will check.
Okay.
Well, that little, it's not that definitive, but it does say, this revised to get, finds and outlines the purpose and limit. It purposes and intent of the agreement along with the rules.
So I'm not sure if it outlines it in a better way than it used to, or if it's something new.
Because I mean, it always has to define and outline the rules, so that's why I read that, and I'm like, how is this different than the past?
Okay, do you want to hold on that, or do?
No, I, I, I mean, the chief is good with it, I'm fine with it, but.
You just want to.
Yep, I just want to know what changed.
That makes sense. Anything else on this? All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, consideration, possible action on transient vendor application for Northeast Cutlery Collectors Association Incorporated for a show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on March 17th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay, this is a new one, but.
This is new? So this is new, yeah, you started doing this, yeah. So apparently the host had not been necessarily telling people that they had to go through this process, and so we're now working, Michelle's got them, where they, you can.
Yeah, so I got a call from whoever does the gun show, and he indicated he paid us last year. He didn't, and he did have a permit. So I called the host and let them know that any shows they had there, if they could please let the vendors know that they need to contact us and do this. So apparently they have put something in their packet when they give them whatever shows with, so we should see.
We may start seeing more of these.
And being done.
And they've probably shows that may have been going on right along, but they just never.
Because we've been getting the same ones every year.
Yeah, but there are actually some different ones occasionally, so it's good. I mean, it's a good thing, but.
Those that know know when they do it automatically, but some of the.
But some people did not know, so we just let you know, we will be bringing more of these forward.
Okay.
They go through the same sign-off process, so.
Yeah, chief signs off and everything, and.
Yeah.
So we should start seeing more.
Okay, do, also maybe one thing we should just let the chief know, if we have, they have a detailed request or something, that they also make sure that this, that comes to us.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transient vendor application for Northeast Cutlery Collectors Association for a show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on March 17th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Great, do I have a second?
Second that.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, old business. I had some old business, so I don't, I guess I'll start on this side tonight. So, Carboys, where are we with the Board of Health and Comcom getting on the property?
So, yeah, so there was going to be a show cause hearing that they were supposed to be at, I think we gave them, was it March 1st? Was it this week?
I thought it was this week, but.
It's this week's meeting, I think they, right, go ahead.
Yeah, it was March 1st, you said, but then we didn't do a notice or anything, so we need to.
We have to publicly advertise it, but what happened was we received information, I got an email from the engineer saying, okay, well, the inspector came out, the building inspector came out, and so we had a site visit. And we emailed them back and said, no, if you look at our chain of emails, it's not just the building inspector, it's conservation and whatnot. There's no issue that you might be able to get this license on that lot, but we need to know that everything you're doing on the lot, we're licensing with, because he said, well, the conservation thing is a different area. I'm like, no, it crosses into this lot. So at this point, we will do a public notice for the next meeting. We are still working with him, telling him that, that he needs to get conservation on his property. And even inspections, when they went, didn't completely sign off, there were still some things that had to be done. So he knows that, you know, this month, he's going to have to come in front of you or get these things resolved.
How did Nelson end up going on? Did he just call the building inspector?
No, I think, yeah, I think they did. So I emailed them back and forth and saying, you need to get site visits with the following groups that the board mentioned, and they must have called Nelson. And so Nelson went over, so then I emailed back and I emailed conservation, and I said, you know, and they said, we were never even notified of it. So I, I'm also sometimes dealing with the engineer, sometimes dealing with the owner of the property, and I'm, and so I think sometimes maybe there's not direct communication, or there's a choice of who's going to communicate with who. And so I'm just trying to sort of herd cats there and make sure that everybody who they're supposed to have on their property is on their property, because we're sitting here holding this license ready, once everybody goes and does what they're supposed to do. But until conservation goes on that portion of the lot, I don't care what they do with the other part of the lot, that's part of the litigation. But the portion that you're licensing.
Is in Board of Health, too?
Yeah, Board of Health is involved, too. Yep, yes. It's Board of Health, it's business, it's inspections and conservation primarily. So we will notice it, we'll notice them, and it'll likely be on from March 18th unless in the meantime, they get everybody out there that's supposed to be out there.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, that's all I, that's what I was going up on. So Mary Brown, your old business.
Evaluation.
Yes.
That's March 23rd. I sent you the updated list of where I'm at on my completing of goals.
No, that's not the evaluation of you. That's a retreat.
Oh, yeah, that's a retreat. Okay, I didn't know if you were doing the evaluation then or not.
No, we haven't even gotten the paperwork yet.
All right, what's the?
Who has the paperwork?
Yeah, I haven't.
I haven't been evaluated, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I've never been part of one.
We've used the same, what, we've used the same evaluation for, since I've been on the board for many years.
It must be in Jeff's probably files that we have, so we'll get it.
And what, what usually we encourage is if you also want to do a self-evaluation based on it, that's, that's helpful, too. It's excellent, satisfactory, needs improvement. I think there's four categories.
I think it's probably the same form I have for my department head, similar.
And there's a lot of them around, you know, everybody borrows.
Yes, we all.
We need some dates on.
And again, I do ask, and I mentioned this before, that if you are speaking with directors, speak, I know you can't implore people to, compel them to speak, but if you are going to speak with directors or employees, I do encourage you to speak with as many as you can, like, just so that it's an open assessment, and it's good for me, frankly.
Is this evaluation based on a fiscal year? I mean, am I supposed to do an evaluation since I've only been here since April, or is this from last year?
You can do it. It's, but it does, because it goes to the.
Is it July to July?
Fiscal.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I don't know if it's, I mean, usually we were doing the evaluations more like in February or March, so it really was based on a calendar year, but we, and it's supposed to be, in their contract, it says we'll review the TA annually. So we didn't, you know, because we had a lot of goals that were like halfway, so we decided to defer a year. But absolutely, because you are going to have been on for almost a year. So I would say absolutely that you were.
It's also used, you know, for any pay increase.
Right, because otherwise you only have four evaluators. But, you know, if there's an area, sometimes.
NA.
You know, or, there was one year, I forgot, we couldn't review the budget, we were filling that out before I saw the budget, and I think I put, I, you know, can't assess, give a good assessment on this one category if you're not comfortable. But absolutely, you're going to have been on the board for a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to set a date. So the self-evaluation.
Tomorrow or the next day. I can do a self-evaluation inside of a day or two.
It's okay.
I can have this, I, I mean, we could have everything to you if you want to have it done for the March 18th meeting.
That's a little tight.
That's tight. Well, the 23rd is the retreat day.
I would say the first meeting in April.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
Especially if you were going to talk to anybody and whatnot, yeah.
We meet with people, we all do our individual, then we all give them to the chairman, who goes through them and compiles the score.
Oh, okay, okay.
And usually has a backup person to do that.
Yep.
And then it's always advisable that we speak to the TA one-on-one, let her know what the evaluation is, and then we do it in public.
In public form, yes. Okay.
Sounds good.
So I just, can I, can I just add one thing? Are you moving on, or are you doing something?
No, I'm looking for the calendar.
Okay, you look for the calendar, because we've gone back and forth. So the way KP has advised us is that there's only has to be one that's public. So we all do our individual ones.
Yes.
Those go to you. Jamie will review it. Say you get, you know, all fours and your average is four, you get a four and a one, it's a two, but that's the one that comes here. But under the comments, we all have our own individual comments, and we've done it different ways. In the past, when Mary's been the chair, she looks at our comments and she's taken, you know, done a good job, but a sentence here and a sentence there. But then we've also decided, you know, why don't we all just decide what comments of ours we want to have public, and we've never kind of reconciled. So I don't know if you want to talk about that or not, you know. Every now and then, maybe I went on like this and Mary picked out this sentence, and maybe I thought this one was the one that I wanted, you know what I mean, public, but.
Yeah, I mean, well, let me see what the form looks like first, honestly.
To me, that, I don't matter how much is public, to be honest, I have no problem with any part of it public.
Yeah, because the whole thing could be public.
Technically, it's all public.
Yeah, we could sit here and read.
The final, and you're right, as KP indicates, the individual ones don't have to be, it's collectively the evaluation that leads to the financial impact, or my employment, let's say. But I, again, as far as comments go.
I don't, I do not think that if Mary Lou, for example, were to write you a letter assessing your feedback, just giving you feedback properly, that would just be a personnel right?
That's a one, one-to-one.
It's the financial part of it that makes it public.
Right, but when we've had the composite, that's the public record.
Yes.
We've usually had comments on that, and the question is, do we all just have our own comments for that public record? Or does Jamie go and try to summarize what the comments were and give one or two sentences demonstrating the flavor of them? That's what I'm asking. So something to think about. You know, we've done it. You've been here, but...
Yeah.
Okay, so today is the 4th. We'll have to get the forms, and we should get them to Jamie by when?
Well, I think, so the 4th, what's the first meeting in April?
April Fool's Day.
Oh, God, you're going to evaluate me on April Fool's? Some people would kick out of that.
It would just, it would just be, it would just begin to Jamie.
Yeah, I think, what is everybody, how much time do you guys need?
Well, I think we get the forms by, say, Friday, I'm comfortable with the first April meeting. But if we don't get the forms till the end of next week, I'd probably like a little more time.
Yeah, we'll be able to get the forms quickly. It's got to be around.
Oh, yeah, this, I probably even have a blank one.
Yeah, it's got to be around.
In one of my several rooms.
Yeah, so is the last week, so how many weeks do you guys need? I guess is really the question, if you get the forms tomorrow.
How much time do you need to put it together?
Um, depends how, probably, I could probably do it pretty fast, but if I had to, but it'll probably take me, ah, probably a week. I could probably get it done, depending on the week, right?
Yeah. I mean, that'll give us plenty of time to do ours, get them to you by the 1st.
Yeah, get them to me by the 1st, and then if, and then we'll do it for, so we probably won't do the evaluation, obviously, then, because we'll have to compile it then. So we'll shoot for the 15th, then that's plenty of time, and if there's, if it's more voluminous or there's a problem, then sort it out, but I doubt it.
Tax Day.
Yeah.
So I either get April Fool's Day or Tax Day? Which, what is everybody in a better mood? I don't know. Nobody's in a good mood on Tax Day, though.
Wow, it depends, it could go either way. But the, all right, so that was it. Mary, anything else on?
Nope, that's all I had on hold.
Mary Dally?
So it's either Chase or I that always asks this question, but what about that sign? I feel like it's taking a ridiculous amount of time.
He reached out, he's got the base working. I told you he had a serious injury, and he's hands-on, so it's a little backed up, but he's...
Oh, I didn't know it was a serious injury.
Like a broken hip injury.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, serious injury. So, yeah, so he is on the mend. He emailed me the other day with the base, for me to sign off on the base. So it's back to progress. I apologize.
So is there any money in betterment to create some landscaping around the sign?
Yes, yes, from this year's, when we had the ARPA.
So are we hopeful that this spring will be able to do some landscaping?[1593.15]